I'll call the Newport Beach City Council to order, meeting of October 28th, 2008. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Rozansky, followed by the invocation by Ms. Corinne Yek from St. Michael's and All Angels Episcopal Church.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I invite us to take just a moment for some silence. This evening we come together as servants of this community and stewards of what they have entrusted in our care. We remember the people who live here, our friends and our neighbors. We remember the people who work here, whose efforts and energy we depend upon. And we remember those who play here and give thanks that we have this wonderful place to offer others. Our hope is to be guided by wisdom and motivated by love for this community. And this evening, we give thanks for everyone in this room and their dedication to our common mission. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, unusual situation, we have no presentations this evening. So, Madam Clerk?
The record will also reflect that all members of council are present except for Councilmember Hen, who's excused. Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required. In order to address the council, speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, I neglected to ask the city attorney for a closed session report, so can we have that now?
Yes, I have nothing to report for closed session.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, I'd like to announce that the next meeting of the Green Building Task Force will be next Wednesday, November 5th, 9:30 a.m. in the council chambers. And everyone, the public is invited if you'd like to make comments or participate.
Councilwoman Curry?
On October 21st, I was pleased to participate along with Councilmember Gardner with the groundbreaking for the Pelican Hill Road-North Newport Coast Drive interchange improvements. This is where we had the cement truck turnover in 2007, and I'm pleased to report that staff is underway with this project to make this relatively dangerous intersection much, much safer, and I appreciate the staff's efforts to move that along.
Councilwoman Webb?
I have none.
Councilwoman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Daigle?
Yes, I was noticing an item in the city manager's newsletter, and it said, "In an effort to cut costs and save water, Recreation and General Services staff changed the landscaping in front of the city's sign." This is up at a community center. Previous cost to change seasonal landscaping quarterly was $4,000 per year. The new landscaping cost will be under $1,000 a year. It's really the powerful combination of two concepts. They're having a water savings and a cost savings, and it's over, achieved over a 300% cost savings. And I've been noticing as the staff has been bringing forward various changes in practices and equipments and technology that things are being looked at comprehensively, that we're getting not only an energy or water savings, but also a cost savings, and that whatever is being done, it performs the same function. And so I think it's very important that Newport Beach is looking comprehensively at these issues. And speaking with the finance director, the city is going to be changing out some of its fuel and constructing our first CMG station, and he's putting together a really strong business case as to how those costs are going to look over time. So I just wanted to reinforce the way that we're going about this comprehensively, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you. On October 15th, along with most of the rest of the city council, I attended the annual Chamber of Commerce barbecue honoring our firefighters and lifeguards. And we appreciate the chamber sponsoring that each year to honor the firefighter and lifeguard of the year, and really appreciate all of the hard work our firefighters do for our city. In the same evening, I attended also a fundraiser for the Newport Harbor Mount Nautical Museum. It was the pre-screening of the film Morning Light, which, if anyone hasn't seen it, it's in general release now. It's an inspirational story made by Roy Disney of a crew of young people that actually went and trained and raced in the transpactile race last year, and it's certainly worthwhile seeing. And Roy Disney is also now a resident of Newport Beach, so, yeah, he is. Found that out. And then lastly, on the 24th, with the city manager, I attended the first Chamber of Commerce Member Appreciation Breakfast. It's going to be a quarterly event, and the city manager and myself talked about the city's relationship with the Chamber of Commerce and the importance of maintaining that relationship and sustaining the city's economic base, particularly in the economic times that we're going to be facing in the next year or so here. And I think that's something that's going to be on a quarterly basis, I believe. So that was a nice event to attend also. Madam Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 13, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss the consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilwoman Rozansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Daigle?
None to pull, but I did want to mention that the city did complete the rehabilitation of Birch Street, so it was a very successful project, so better, one even better street, so thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Gardner?
Number one.
Okay, Councilwoman Curry?
A little gender change?
I have nothing to pull.
I have nothing.
I was hoping you wouldn't notice that. I have nothing. Does staff have anything to pull?
Do have item number seven, which is selection of clear-channel outdoor assault bus shelter provider for the city of Newport Beach. Not to pull, but to continue that item.
Okay. City Attorney, do you have something to pull?
Sorry, I'm number four.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back for motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve items 1 to 13. We're going to pull items 1 and 4 and continue number 7.
Second. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Councilwoman Gardner? Item number 1, the minutes from October 14th?
Yes, on page 603, number 20, no, I'm sorry, number 14, oral reports. We didn't draft an ordinance. We drafted proposed ordinance. I don't know if that's a meaningful distinction or not, but I think it is.
Okay, so you want substitute code for ordinance?
Yeah, well, proposed.
All proposed.
Our committees do not draft ordinances.
Got you. Okay, is there a motion?
I move the action.
Okay, anybody from the public want to comment? Seeing no one, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is number 4, Sajor Bistro and Lounge Appeal. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, this, Mrs. Overstreet sent in a letter today asking some questions and having some concerns about the resolution that was prepared. I think we've clarified with her, she was looking at older version of the resolution, and so most of the items have been clarified, although she did raise a couple of questions, and David Leepo's going to go over just a couple minor changes that are being presented to you tonight that are different than what is in your packet.
Thank you, Ms. Clausen. Mayor, you have before you some recent revisions. We just went over here with Mrs. Overstreet. Direct your attention to number 1. You see the underlying language, we just clarified that this is retail wine sales and the wine tasting is in conjunction with the retail wine sales as opposed to being a standalone drinking establishment. Also, under number, we want to also revise what you have there's number 4. It starts with each tasting shall be limited per the Alcohol, Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. We want to further change that to, each tasting shall be done per the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control Regulations for Wine Tasting. We just want to make it clear that that's what we're talking about. They limit each serving to two ounces, so we want to add that to what you have before you. Also, in what you have before you, most recent changes, number 5. We agreed with, talking to the Overstreets, that the limitation to 10% of gross sales might be overly restrictive, so we have suggested that the gross sales for onset wine tasting not exceed those under the type 22 off-premise consumption gross sales number. I also did agree to have Mrs. Overstreet speak.
What is that?
I'm sorry?
What is that, the type 22?
In other words-
The type 21?
It's 21.
Bottled wine that they buy-
In other words, they can't-
For off-premise consumption.
They can't have more gross sales of wine tasting than they do of actual retail sales.
Okay, that's type 21, not 22.
21.
Yeah.
Oh, did I say 22? I'm sorry, 21. Also, I did indicate that, confirm with Mrs. Overstreet that per the discussion last time, the council, the seating arrangement, sofas or casual seating was allowed in A2, and also that, you know, if, consistent with some of the other wine shops in town, if there's an advertisement for wine tasting bar, that is consistent, we're regulating the use, not the collateral advertising material. So, Mrs. Overstreet is here. If you want to ask any questions, she has agreed to the changes that we just submitted to you.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Leepo? Thank you. Okay, does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back for motion.
Mr. Mayor, move the action with the adjustments recommended by staff.
Second. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, get back to my agenda here. Okay, next item is oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Okay, Councilwoman Curry?
Your report?
Councilman Webb?
I have no report.
Councilman Rozansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Daigle?
Sure, I'll talk about, a little bit about our Citizens Aviation Committee. We heard a report on the Go Local study by Peggy Ducey, and her firm was awarded funding by OCTA to study the market around JWA. And the concept, underpinning the study was, you know, let's understand that market before we come up with any plans to move people around. And so they did a passenger survey, and one of the findings was that the majority of people that travel to the airport do so in less than 30 minutes, so convenience is a big factor in those coming to the airport. The entire report is available on the city's website, and so if you want to look at it in its entirety, it's there. I wanted to make a beeline for one of the findings that could have a practical effect, and that is that among the findings that could be helpful in the short term for Newport Beach is that over 1 million passengers that utilize JWA are going to Disney, to Anaheim, to the convention center. And so there may be some opportunities there to try to shift some of that traffic instead of going into John Wayne, going into Ontario. And at our Citizens Aviation Committee, the airport director, he is a very consistent attendee and very helpful and very, always very accessible to the city, and it was his sense that that could be a viable option, so that was good to hear. But also that, you know, as we all know, sort of from our own anecdotal experience, that demand remains very high at John Wayne Airport. It's a very convenient airport, so while we may get some possibility to shift some traffic, certainly the demand remains very high. So I thought that the, that the Go Local study was helpful in better understanding the market, and again, is available on the city's website.
Thank you. The City Hall Design Committee will be presenting their recommendations to the city council at the next meeting, November 12th. They did meet last night, and I understand they have formulated a recommendation that will be forthcoming to the city council. There are displays throughout the city, at the city libraries, Oasis Community Center, Senior Center, Newport Coast Community Center, and City Hall. And there's comment sheets that can be filled out by the public, so I would suggest that anyone that has any comments that they would like the council to consider, to get them in in writing at any of those locations, and also attend the city council meeting in which these presentations or the committees' report will be presented to the city council. Madam Clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, does anyone wish to address the council on anything not on the agenda? Step forward. Okay, seeing no one. Next item is Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report. Mr. Leepo?
Mayor and members of city council, last week, the Planning Commission had one item on their agenda, and that was the expansion of the Hyatt Regency Newport Beach. The proposal is to tear down the Terrace Ballroom, 12 of the existing units, and to build a 10,000-square-foot spa and fitness center, 88 timeshare units, and a new two-story parking garage. This will entail giving up the golf course that's out there. There's a parcel map, a modification permit for exceeding the height limit on the ballroom and the tower for that ballroom, and there's also a development agreement that's been drafted. Because the development agreement hadn't been reviewed by the property owner yet, the applicant requested a continuation to November 6th. So the Planning Commission did hear the public comment and took testimony on the draft environmental impact report that's been prepared for this project. After taking comments, about nine members of the public, they discussed, provide further direction on draft EIR and continued the matter to November 6th.
Any questions, Mr. Leepo? Thank you. Okay, let's see what we have here. This moving so fast tonight, I'm not used to this. Okay, Continued Business, Council Review of Staff Status Progress on Six of the City Council Priorities for 2008.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council well knows, once a month, we come to the city council with a status report on six of the 12 priorities that council established last January. And the last time that we did this, council asked that we not make this a consent calendar item, but actually have the opportunity for some discussion to take place. Let me run through very quickly the status on the six priorities that you're looking at tonight, and the mayor already talked about, the first one being the City Hall project construction and the planning process. And as the status report says, it's anticipated that council will make a decision on the architect at their November 25th meeting after, first meeting in November, hearing the recommendation from the Architectural Committee. And shortly thereafter, then, the EIR process would begin, and we would begin negotiations with that architect and get a contract to bring back to the city council. So we seem to be on track with that one, and that whole process has moved ahead smartly, and I think we have met all of our timeframe that were initiated probably at the beginning of the year. The second one is regularly update the facility financing plan and implement the planning, financing, and construction of the identified projects. This, the Council Finance Committee is going to meet in November and have a discussion on how Oasis is to be financed. So that recommendation, it may take more than one meeting, will be forthcoming to the city council. As council listened to a status report on the Oasis project earlier at the study session, and we're anticipating the beginning of the construction of the Oasis project in March. The third item is implement new group residential ordinances, work at the state and federal levels to allow local governments greater ability to regulate secondary effects of an over-concentration of group homes. And this report is quite lengthy, quite detailed, nicely done by Dave Kiff. So I think on the legal front, the city attorney may want to talk about a tentative ruling that we are anticipating coming out in the next few days, and I think I would ask her to talk about that at this point.
Sure, something that just came up out last Friday, and then we had oral arguments on Monday, so we're waiting for a final determination from Judge Selma and the district court in the lawsuit that Pacific Shores has filed against the city on the ordinance. And the, if the judge reaches, stays with his tentative decision, most of the claims, 95% of the claims in that lawsuit will be dismissed. So it was a good, it's a good decision, if it's made final, that will uphold the city's ordinances once again.
The next priority is prepare and implement a water quality master plan, called a WQMP, that addresses and prioritizes our water quality needs into the future. So staff is anticipating that review of that plan coming to the city council on one of your November meetings. That is the latest on the status report of them.
Mr. Lo, I have a question for you. It talks about with direction from the study session finalize the WQMP in the context of the fiscal year '09-10 budget. What, what does that sort of mean?
I think it's, we do have a budget allocation for this process, and it is matching to see if we are okay, based upon the direction from the city council with what we have budgeted, or whether we need to come back with a, you know, new allocation, an additional allocation. So I'm not sure how that's going to turn out.
Because I appreciate that we would have input, you know, before the CIP starts. I think that's great. I'm just thinking at some point, the conversation ought to be more inclusive, you know, what are the other pieces of the pie, you know, be it traffic, harbor improvements, I mean, there's a whole bunch of different improvements within our CIP, so I would want at some point, I think it would serve the residents well if that conversation was inclusive-
Okay.
-in all of our different sort of project areas.
So in the context of all of our other needs that we have?
Yes, yes.
Point well taken. The next item is institute an organizational performance improvement effort through data gathering and the identification of service benchmarks to measure organizational effectiveness. And this has slowed down a little bit. We have not, we are not going to meet our last item on page 10 that says, "ICMA team prepares a final report and presentation to the city council." We didn't meet that on September 15th. But the Finance Committee has understood that, right now, there's a lot of training that is going on by our IT division because we are moving to a different user software as far as email and all of that is concerned. We're training over 250 employees in that software application, so it is very basic to this organization. And in order to capture the data that we need for the benchmark, we have to come up with about 20 new software applications in order to make sure that we capture the data. So that's going to take a little more time, and we're anticipating that the, this report should be made about in March of next year. The last item is the, conduct an appraisal of banning ranch property and assess funding availability for the purchase of the property for open space. There was a first meeting with property owners and staff on October 20th. I know conversations is, are continuing. Sharon, I don't know if you have anything that you would like to say on that?
Well, just to make sure everyone knows, we have retained an appraisal firm, Bus Shelger Associates, and they have started work, including taking a tour of the site and meeting with the property owners and myself and our open space consultant, Dave Meyerson. At, there, in Dave's recommendation, and this was something that was discussed with the city council committee on this project, the contract doesn't call for them to do a full formal appraisal because we would not get any of the state funding agencies interested until we had, were further along in negotiations with the developers, so we need just an opinion of value to get that started. And we also know that for an acquisition, as expensive as this is likely to be, new state regulations require the state to do their own appraisal anyway, so we didn't think it would be the best use of city funds to go that formal route.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my brief status report. If there are any questions, I and the rest of the staff will do our best to answer them.
Okay, any questions, the staff on the status report? Anybody from the public wish to comment on the status report? Okay, that's just to receive and file, so there's no action required on that.
That's right.
Okay, next item on our agenda is to review the council-approved boards, commissions, and committees list and consider sunsetting or eliminating certain committees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it was Councilwoman Gardner who, a short while ago, asked the staff to take a look at our council-approved boards, commissions, and committees, to see if we needed all of them, and I think that was a good direction to give. After doing so, I'm coming back with a recommendation to the city council, just to begin the discussion. But from my opinion, I thought that there were nine committees that we could do away with. One being the ad hoc committee to promote the revitalization of the Baboa Peninsula. We call that a PROP, P-R-O-P. Two is the city school ad hoc committee. Three is the oil and gas field operations committee. Four is the 4th of July West Newport Safety Planning Committee, the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Committee, the 1-1 Memorial Committee, the city clerk ad hoc recruitment committee, the city attorney ad hoc recruitment committee after December 31st of this year, and the Santa Ana River Crossing Committee. The staff report deals with each of these nine committees. And as far as the Baboa Peninsula PROP Committee, this was a very active committee in, from 1997 to about 2001, and that is when a lot of improvements, hardscape and landscape improvements went in. Whenever there are issues, such as council heard today, as far as maybe tree replacement, it's my feeling that the city council person representing that district can meet with the interested parties in the, on the peninsula and then work with staff to come forward with a recommendation to where we don't need a standing committee anymore. I think that can be accomplished without the standing committee. The city school ad hoc committee, I said, in the nine and a half years I've been here, I think this committee has met twice, and I don't think in the last six years has it met. So whenever issues come up, the mayor can appoint a couple of council people to meet with representatives from the school board and have that kind of meeting. The oil and gas field operations committee, this is an important function that the city has, and the revenue is important, but I think we have a council finance committee that can serve the same purpose. Most of the issues that we have been bringing to this committee, and this committee I don't think has, has met for the last 18 months, deal with whether we should be spending money on operations or not. So I think the council finance committee is a good way to go with that. The July 4th West Newport Safety Planning Committee, some people say, might say, "Oh my goodness, we can't do without that," and the intention is not to do without it. That it would be staff's intention that the police department notice this meeting, notice the neighborhoods that the meeting will take place. We just don't need a standing committee in order to ensure that that would happen. The Neighborhood Traffic Calming Committee met a couple of times after its formation in 2004, but really hasn't met, I think, in the last three years, so my-
We met, we met two weeks ago.
Oh. I guess I wasn't invited. I think that was one of those things that was deleted on the list. But my thinking is that whenever a traffic calming issue comes up in the neighborhood, that we can meet with the council or council people who are involved in those neighborhoods along- along with the interest groups. The council has a policy for staff to follow and we can do that without a standing committee. The 1-1 Memorial Committee has finished their work. The Santa Ana River Crossing Committee, we call it SARC's ad hoc committee, that this can just meet on a as-needed basis and the mayor can select who should be attending those infrequent meetings that don't take place all that often. So the staff report concludes by saying if council decides which, if any committees to eliminate, then I will bring back a resolution at the next council agenda confirming that decision. But I thought I would put it out there for discussion.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Well, I think one that we should also consider is the Newport Coast Advisory Committee. This is actually, should be sunsetted. It was established in 2001 and for six years. And so what I would like to do in the next few days is I'll take the responsibility, perhaps Mr. Kiff can help me, but of contacting the members. And we haven't met for several months. I think our major accomplishments that we were concerned with, the annexation and then the community center have been accomplished. And discuss whether they want to become, evolve into something like the Crowne Delmar Residents Association, which is a more informal association, how the master association handle, or whether they do want to continue, in which case we need to re-extend the term. So I will try to get back to you in time for that to be part of it. The other thing that I'd just like to have us think about, and I don't, we don't need to do it on this go around because this is specifically on the committees, but on the guidelines, the city council, the general guidelines, one of the things we have on D, committee appointees may be replaced after three consecutive unexcused absences. I think we might want to also consider excused absences. We have an instance in EQAC where someone is teaching a course for six months. Well, I don't know that that's, it's excused, I guess, but that isn't contributing to the committees. So we might want to look at membership and just the attendance, the whole thing, because it makes it very difficult when you have people like that and we don't get a quorum. You have a meeting and you can't get any business done. And I noticed this says that committees shall be reviewed in October of each year. This is October, so we're doing it, I don't know if we've done it in the past, but.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Zansky?
With regard to number four, the Fourth of July West Newport Safety Planning Committee, I actually brought that subject up at the last committee meeting to see if committee members wanted to continue with that committee. And consensus was that they did want to continue and I think it does serve a purpose. So I would recommend that that committee be removed from the list.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Does anyone from the public want to comment on the city committees? Okay. Seeing no, seeing no, and I'll bring it back for action.
No reaction, leaving item number four, the Fourth of July committee off of the list of proposals.
Okay. Please vote.
And I'll come back with a resolution signifying that for the next meeting.
I'll second it, I guess, to accept that.
Motion carries.
I heard someone seconded. Item number 17, the revenue and investment update.
Dennis Tanner is going to kick this item off. I think it's happening sooner than anybody thought it would in tonight's agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The primary purpose of tonight's presentation will be for you to hear from two of the city's five investment advisors. And I'll go into a little detail about that when I introduce those individuals. But I also wanted to take this opportunity, and the city manager thought it would be a good idea, as part of this presentation, to go over some of our major revenue sources. I'm getting a lot of questions from the community, from staff, how we're doing, from, especially from the council, how we're doing on our revenue budget for this fiscal year. Likewise, getting a lot of questions on our investments. So I'm going to address both of those issues tonight. But again, before I introduce the investment advisors, I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about our city revenues. The report you received, along with the staff report, really went over four of our major revenue sources, and those are secured property tax, transient occupancy tax, business license tax, and sales tax. And those four revenue sources make up over 61% of our total general fund budgeted revenues. And so how they go really is how the city goes. But I'd like to emphasize that it's very, very early in the fiscal year to be making any concrete predictions about how our revenues are going to do. But I will start. There are some indicators that I'll share with you tonight and then I'll be glad to answer any questions. By far, our largest revenue source is secured property tax. Those collections, we get eight apportionments a year, and those apportionments don't even begin until, the first one is on November 20th. Then we get two in December, one in January, one in March, April, May, and then July of 2009. So again, for me to make, making a, any kind of prediction about how those revenue sources are going to be, that revenue source is going to do this year is a little premature, but we do have some good indicators. And I'll share those with you. We've learned that in August, the county assessor informed us that our assessed valuations were up 6.5%. That's a very good indication of how our property tax revenues will go. I mean, assessed valuations go up, our receipts should follow. In 2008, fiscal year ending June 30, 2008, our actual collections for secured property taxes was $53.1 million, $53,116,666. We budgeted for this current fiscal year, 2009, $54,080,000. For us to make that budget estimate would require an increase of 1.8% over our prior year collections. We think that's certainly doable with an assessed valuation increase of 6.5%. In fact, if our secured property tax collections do in fact increase 6.5% over the prior fiscal year, then we would expect to receive $56.6 million, which is $2.5 million over our budget estimate. So we feel pretty good about our secured property tax. And again, it is our largest revenue source. Next, we looked at transient occupancy tax collections. These are sometimes referred to as bed taxes, collected from both our hotels and our summer rentals. I just looked at the hotel collections. And through the first three months of the fiscal year, we've received, current year collections are up 11.7% over the prior fiscal year. And if that trend continues, we can expect to receive over $13 million. We, actual collections for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2008, was $11.3 million. We only budgeted $11.6 million, which is about a 3.1% increase. So again, if that 11.7% increase that we've realized for the first three months of the fiscal year continues, we can expect to collect over $13 million or approximately $1.6 million over our budget estimate. The third revenue source we looked at, another large one, is our business tax collections. In 2008, total collections was $4,119,173. We budgeted for this year, and again, we do these revenue estimates way early in the fiscal year, usually in February. We only budgeted collections of $3,958,680, which is actually a 4% decrease over what we collected in the prior fiscal year. The trend for the first three months of this fiscal year shows an increase of 21.4%. And if that trend continues, we can expect to receive $4.8 million this year or approximately $900,000 over our original budget estimate. Now, there are some, we've received some direction that we're going to come back in the very near future at a study session and make a presentation to you about what, how we collect business license tax and what our enforcement procedures are. And council may wish to make some adjustments to that, but barring that, we can expect to receive up to $4.8 million, $4.9 million, $900,000 increase over the prior fiscal year. And please interrupt me if you have any questions. The final thing we looked at is our second largest revenue source, which is sales tax. And there, the news is not so good. The good news is, and I included a pie chart in the staff report that you're looking at, is the good news is that we're very diversified, much more than most cities, in our sales tax collections. For instance, new auto sales produces 20% of our collections, restaurants 19%, leasing companies 9%, department stores 8%, miscellaneous retail 7%, apparel stores 6%, service stations 5%, food markets 4%, furniture and appliances 3%, miscellaneous vehicle sales 3%, and all other categories 16%. As you know, there are some cities, I won't pick on anybody, but there are some cities that are very heavily weighed into auto sales, or there are some cities that are very heavily weighed into department stores. We're not. We're diversified and that's the good news. But there is some bad news. What we're seeing so far this fiscal year, well, let me back up. The way we receive our sales tax from the State Board of Equalization is we receive two advances for a quarter and then we receive a cleanup or catch-up payment. And those advances are based upon what happened in the prior fiscal year. And what happened in the prior fiscal year is we received a fund transfer or an audit adjustment in the amount of $462,000 and an audit refund of $111,000. And what that did was skew the collections for 2007. And then conversely, in September of this year, we received a negative fund transfer of $734,000. The one we received last year was Fletcher Jones Motor Cars leasing operation. The one we received in September this year, we believe, although we haven't gotten to the bottom of it yet, we believe it is also Fletcher Jones Motor Cars, and I think they're making a correction for what happened last year. So it's very hard to track this. And again, we've only received two payments for the fiscal year. The payments we received in July and August really relate to the prior fiscal year. If you look at accounting principles, to accrue a revenue, it has to be measurable and receivable. And so if it's measurable and it's receivable, within 60 days, you accrue it for the prior year. Well, when we, the third payment or the final payment for the cleanup payment for the year which we received in September is not, it's neither one of those. It's received after 60 days of the new year and it's also not measurable at the time that we close our books simply because it's a cleanup payment. So it goes into the new year. But what we're looking at, and these numbers are fresh off the, off our books today, thus far, when we look at receipts for the fiscal year, we're seeing a 6.2% decline in sales tax receipts for the current year. We budgeted $23.3 million. If we translate that into a 6.2% reduction over what we received in the prior year, we would expect to receive $21,234,971, which is a loss or a loss of $2.1 million of what we budgeted. But I want to emphasize again that we've only received two payments this fiscal year. We've got fund transfers that we have to estimate. So I'm not prepared tonight to say that our sales tax is really going to be down that amount. I have a gut feeling it won't be, but like everyone else, we're feeling the effects of the slowing economy. And so we, I thought it best to get the news out to you tonight rather than surprise you later with some bad news. So sales tax concerns us. We think we're doing fine in property tax. We think we're doing, we know we're doing fine in transient occupancy tax and business tax, but sales tax does concern us. But overall, we're looking at a net positive when we look at those three, four revenue sources. I've got a lot more information here that I could share with you. For instance, I was asked a question on property tax. Are we, are we seeing a lot of assessment appeals? We went back, we received a report three weeks ago from the state, the county assessor. We've got assessments of $2,949,733,000 under appeal, or, yeah, appeal. The claimants are saying that those assessments should be $1,799,112,901, which is a little over $200 million. But when you figure that the property tax is 1% of that $200 million number and we only receive 17% of each dollar of property tax, the potential loss for the city is $343,000 in secured property tax. That's not really a big number. That doesn't mean all those appeals will be granted. There might be more, there might be less, but it's not a big number and so it doesn't really concern us at this point. That is appeals through June 30, 2008. And with that, I'd like to answer any questions on revenues, and if you have none, then I'll segue into investments.
Mayor for Tim Tagle?
What is the total assessed value of Newport Beach?
Oh.
That is like $50 billion or something?
No, it's about $33 billion.
$33 billion, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I like to say that Bill Gates can only buy the town twice.
Okay. I think we're ready for the next part.
Well, thank you. I started with the city in July of 1990, and at that time, our investment policy was really one paragraph and it consisted of, the city's investment policy at the time was to invest in CDs with local banking institutions, whether they were banks or savings and loans. And we had a lot of money with a lot of savings and loans and banks that were collateralized, but they weren't insured by FDIC because we had $5 million with the individual institution. So we thought there was a better way to do that. We started inquiring how we could do that, invest the funds ourselves or look at another way. And what we decided to do is hire professionals. We hired professional money managers, investment advisors. We have two of them here tonight that we'll be presenting to you. We, we hired, the first firm that we contracted with was Chandler Asset Management out of San Diego. The second one was Public Financial Management. They were based in Pennsylvania. They have an office in San Francisco who we deal with. Wells Fargo Bank, City National Bank, and finally, the last one we hired was MBIA. Over the years, we've changed advisors as well because at one time we were with Security Pacific Bank and we were with First Interstate Bank. Of course, you know, those no longer exist. The investment advisors themselves do not have any access to city funds. We have separate custodial accounts with all five of the advisors. For Chandler, we use Bank of America. For PFM, we use Union Bank. For Wells Fargo, they have a separate trust division within the banks, so they use their own trust division. Same with City National Bank, they have a separate trust operation. And then finally, MBIA, we use Bank of New York. The goal, I think, when we first originally hired these investment advisors, is say, see which ones did the best and perhaps, you know, drop off the poor performers and put more emphasis on the good performers. But what we've found over the years, and we've been doing this for over about 17 years now, is that they're, they all do good. They all do a great job. They all do a little bit different job. They all have a little bit different philosophy about how they should invest the city's funds, whether they're trying to predict interest rates or they don't go there. But we've found that over the years, each one of them has done better than others in certain, certain markets. And so we've found it very well served that we keep all five of them and we're very, very happy with their services. They send us reports monthly, which I include in the council newsletter that says that they're in compliance with the city's investment policy. They send us trade tickets when they make a trade during, during the month. And then we sit down and actually meet with them on a quarterly basis. They come down to our office, sit down, go over with some of what they'll go over with you tonight, explain it very well. And again, I think we're very, very comfortable with the way we do this. Plus the fact that the basis points that we pay these, it varies because some do the custodial services and others don't, but it's, and it varies by firm, but the basis points we pay these firms is around 15 basis points. And so if you look at a $100 million portfolio, that's about $150,000 a year. We don't think that we could hire an individual or two that could do a better job for us. And so with that, is there any questions on how we manage our investment portfolio? If not, I'd like to introduce first Rod Olaya with City National Bank, and second, will come up to speak to you is Marty Casell with Castle with Chandler Asset Management. And I think Rod wanted to go first.
Dennis, maybe you can say though, how much money that we have invested approximately?
Dennis, maybe you can say, though, how much money that we have invested approximately in total among the five investors?
Well, we took five out today, but as of September thirtieth, we had under management with the investment firms, one hundred and forty-two-point-six million dollars. And then we were running about, at that time, at the end of September, about four-and-a-half million dollars that we run in-house, just for liquidity purposes. Rod?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us. My name is Rod Alea. I'm the Director of Fixed Income for City National Asset Management, which is a division of City National Bank. As a corporation, we oversee about fifty-five billion dollars in clients' assets under management. That's separate from the bank's assets, obviously. It's a fifteen-billion-dollar bank as a size, so we're about four times bigger than the bank, or thereabouts. And I have direct oversight of about fifteen billion of those dollar assets for high net worth individuals, cities, non-for-profits, and other clients. Obviously, some of the oversight that we do, and we have over us is, is not just internally, but also with Dennis, Danner, and Dick Hirth, is, he mentioned earlier, monthly reports, online access to see how, while we're doing, and any transactions. Internal compliance, obviously, for an organization, and periodic meetings. There's a, there's a guiding document you, or we are all well aware of, which is the investment policy of what's allowable investments to measure and maintain risk and reward parameters. And so we're well within those ranges. And so you probably have our materials, and I won't belabor the point, because, you know, we put a lot of economic charts in there, I won't go through them. We're living the economy now. But our, our book is here, and I can go through just quickly the second section on there, which is the portfolio. In a monthly report, with the credit crunch and liquidity crisis that's been felt throughout the world in investable assets, all asset classes have been hurt. That has not been the case for the city's monies. We've been ultra-conservative in this environment, for the unforeseen. Clients who invest in other asset classes, like equities or hedge funds, what have you, need money when money's inaccessible to them. That's part of the liquidity crisis that we're seeing. We've been, within the rules of the investment policy, of very safe and liquid assets. We've been, we have gotten even safer and more liquid in this environment, for the unforeseen, in case the city needs money. We've invested in high-quality assets with corporate bonds, or treasury securities, or government agency securities, well within the range, and have done very well. And we also are accruing or earning more income than the benchmark we're measured against, which is a one-to-three-year treasury benchmark. With the credit crunch and liquidity crisis, obviously, you've seen treasury securities rally or do well, and other asset classes like stocks and corporate bonds and other things not do as well, or have negative returns. We haven't had negative returns in this portfolio, it's done quite well. Just as of, a few days ago, when we made the books, the market value of the portfolio we're managing for the city is about twenty-seven-and-a-half million dollars, thrown off almost nine-hundred-thousand dollars a year in income from the bonds in the portfolio. All the assets we have are maturing well within under three years, and again, very high quality. The average life of the portfolio, we're keeping very short right now, is about one-and-a-half year average life, thrown off about five percent income rate, and internal rate of return or yield to maturity of about three-point-two percent. Performance year-to-date, through September thirtieth, up over, above almost two-and-a-half percent positive for the year. And when looking long-term, we're beating a benchmark of well over five-point-one percent annualized year-over-year, since we've been managing the portfolio for quite some time. Any issues or holdings in the portfolio are not an issue right now. We have just two corporate bonds in there, and it's been in Credit Crunch, Bank of America, and Goldman Sachs, and those are doing quite well. And the rest of them are government agencies, or treasury securities, or a treasury money-market suite vehicle. Again, ultra-safe, high liquidity, plan for the unforeseen, beating competitive against a benchmark in risk management when it comes to communication. I went very quickly, because I know it's late, and I want to give you the quick and dirty version, but I also want to address any questions or issues, and I know you have another advisor you'd like to speak with, too.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for having us.
Again, our second advisor is Marty Castle from Chandler Asset Management. Chandler was actually the first firm that we hired in January of nineteen ninety-one, and we've been with them the longest, and we, not just them, we consult with our investment advisors, all of them, all five of them. Whenever we want to revise our investment policy, we, we talk to them about changes in state law, so they're an invaluable tool. Marty?
Well, good evening, thanks for the introduction. And just to tell you a little bit about myself and the firm, I am the CEO and Chief Investment Officer for Chandler Asset Management. I started with the firm in nineteen ninety-one. The firm was started in nineteen ninety-eight by Kay Chandler, who is still actively involved in the firm, and is owned by the employees of Chandler Asset Management, Kay Chandler and myself. We're completely independent from any other organizations, and both of us have spent our entire careers managing funds for local agencies such as yourself. Both of us, at different times, spent, spent some years at the city of San Diego managing the portfolio, and Kay actually started her career back at the county of San Diego quite a while ago. We manage portfolios for, all fixed income portfolios, for about sixty-four California local agency clients, plus some hospitals and corporate clients as well. We directly manage roughly four billion dollars in assets, and then we advise on another roughly eleven billion for some large California local entities. So we have a broad base of clients that have all similar investment objectives as the city of Newport Beach. And of course, as Rod mentioned, first amongst those is Safi, the portfolio, which is really the, the primary focus of portfolios in this environment that we're in. And I'm going to just go over very briefly, just a couple of economic information, just to keep things in perspective. I know we get bombarded with the news right now on a daily basis as to where things are. An important thing to keep in mind here, I think, is, is that, of course, the economy is slowing down. Sales tax revenues is a good indication of some of the things that are taking place in, in the economy. The other part that's important with this, and dealing with the, the financial crisis that we're, we're faced with right now, is that the Federal Reserve and the Treasury are taking a lot of different steps to ease those issues. At this point, there's still a lot that has not been put in place, so it's hard to say exactly how successful that's going to be, and how long that will take to see improvement. But it is certainly not going ignored, and likely we'll see some, some positive outcomes from that in the very near term. A couple of the key, key economic indicators that we watch is, is non-farm payrolls, the growth in the employment rate. Unfortunately, over the last nine months, we've seen declines in non-farm payrolls each and every month, most recently losing about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand jobs, as well as the unemployment rate rising to six-point-one percent. So that is certainly a big concern. And going back to what's regarded as the root of some of the problems we have is, is with housing. And single-family home starts, two-and-a-half years ago, were growing, or the annual rate of new home starts was about one-point-eight million. We're now down to about five-hundred-and-forty thousand, so it's dropped dramatically. So, as some, as that begins to level out, that will be a good indication of, of some stabilization in the overall economy. With that, interest rates, particularly on treasury securities, have fallen rather dramatically over the past year or so. Back in late oh-seven, or mid-oh-seven, the two-year treasury was, had a yield of between four-and-a-half and five percent. We now are looking at yields of roughly one-and-a-half percent for the two-year treasury note, so it has dropped extremely dramatically. So with that, I want to couple, a couple item, cover a couple of items with regards to the portfolio. And our, our basic guidelines, and of course, the investment policy is the same, but our basic guidelines for managing the portfolio is similar to, to the other managers, and as Dennis mentioned, we all have a little different philosophy in how we go about doing that. But the most important thing is, in this environment, having a well-diversified portfolio that is very safe is, is of utmost importance. The average maturity of the portfolio that we manage is roughly one-point-eight years. We keep that fairly steady, and we also tend to keep that very close to, to our benchmark maturity. We do not try to anticipate interest rates, we look for other ways of adding value to the portfolio, but that average maturity or duration of the portfolio is a real good indicator of the overall, overall exposure to the market that the portfolio has, and that benchmark represents that appropriate level of risk or exposure to the market. So we always want to keep that very close there. The credit quality of the portfolio is extremely high at AAA, and the portion that we manage currently is just over thirty-one million dollars. Treasury securities, over the past six months or so, six months to a year, we have been increasing as this, this uncertainty has heightened. Agency securities, we've kept a strong exposure to agency securities, around forty-six percent of the portfolio, and corporate securities represent about twenty-four percent of the portfolio, very high quality, and all of the corporate securities that we have in the portfolio are very short-term in, in nature. We're getting our, our duration, or helping with our average maturity primarily through using longer-term treasury securities within, within the portfolio. And then the performance of the portfolio has been doing very well, and there's a lot of different measures for measure, for that performance. Over the last twelve months, the portfolio has had a return of just over five percent, a little bit below the benchmark return over that time, which the benchmark is, only has treasuries. So in this environment, treasuries have been the best-performing asset class. Holding agencies and, and other securities have not had the same benefit, but still a very strong portfolio. And just for a reference, Leif, the state investment pool over that twelve-month period, had a return of about three-point-seven-six percent. So even with all of this, the tumultuous times that we've been in, portfolio's doing very well. As was mentioned, we've been managing the portfolio since nineteen ninety-one, and the annualized return for the portfolio since the inception then is five-point-five percent, compared to the benchmark of five-point-four-four. So it's been tracking right along over a long period of time, right even with, with the benchmark. And if there's any questions or anything specifics about the portfolio you'd like me to address, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I have a question, it's not on income or revenue, but I was just wondering, with PERS, are we going to have much greater contribution required of us because of their losses?
Timely question. We received our actuarial analysis today, and counterintuitive, both our safety and our miscellaneous rates, both went down over one percent. That's not going to say what's going to happen next year, but...
Yeah, aren't they on like a longer smoothing pattern now to just, for this exact reason, to kind of smooth out bumps?
Exactly.
So it's not as erratic?
Exactly.
So it really won't be reflected yet? I mean, downturns have happened mostly in the last few months.
True, and, and they, they trail two years. I mean, they're looking at returns from June thirtieth, so, but again, with, with the new smoothing methods and the new actuarial methods that they use, they employ, you're going to see very slow changes to, to rates. They'll, in good times, they'll go down slowly, in bad times, they'll go up slowly. And it just so happens that both of our rates went down one percent, a little over one percent for next year.
Dennis, let me add one more thing. We had two advisors come and talk to you tonight. We invited all five, but these were the only two, who, we only made that request about two weeks ago, so on that short notice, these were the two that we could get. So we didn't hand-select the advisors based upon who might tell us the best story. I want to make sure that you understand that.
Right.
Well, we know who to give our business to, right?
And if we invited MBIA, and they, and they meet with us quarterly, it's not a problem. They, they're more than welcome, more than willing to meet with you or anytime, but they come from Denver. As I mentioned, PFM, we deal with San Francisco, and likewise with Wells Fargo, their San Francisco office. They'll be more than glad to come meet with you at any time you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item?
Good evening, Lori Morris, West Newport. I didn't expect to speak on this tonight, I didn't actually expect this to even be going on. I'm not an economist by any means, and you have all these experts here who apparently are. As far as I'm concerned, the sales tax is your indicator for the rest of this year. These tax-based estimates that's been given, the first three, everybody's estimating that they're going to go right up, right as they estimate. I don't know your name, Dennis. He's looking at the net positive, but he's not assured of these amounts, as any of us are, for the next coming year. We've known in the last three months that everything's gone into the tank, our economy's in the tank. So how can we make these estimates with the economy in the tank? How can you bank on making the same amount of tax in all sectors for the coming fiscal year? I don't know how that's, maybe you can explain it when I'm done. Like I said, I'm not an economist, I'm just a resident, but I do have common sense, and I'll ask a common sense question, and like I said, I'd like to be realistic about this. If these revenues don't come through, which I believe will be the case, what position are we actually going to be in? No one up here asked that question, that if this actually doesn't go the way they've all planned, they're, they're seeing that the sales tax is not what they expected, they knew it wouldn't be. What was that, two-point-one million loss? So what position are we going to be in? These expectations can be dangerous when you are dealing with our city budget, or what we are investing in. And with the economy the way it's going, most economists don't expect a rebound until 2010. So, is there a plan if we don't receive this tax, this estimated taxual for the first three? Sales tax is down, and we expect it to stay down for the coming year. So maybe one of you can ask or answer that question. That wasn't answered for me. And Mr. Currie has a plan to spend millions of dollars replacing every city building in Newport Beach. Is that right? Is it, do I have that right? Because that's what I understand to be happening, is, are there buildings being replaced in Newport Beach? No? Okay, we're not going to answer that question? Okay. So once the wheels get turning, and we start replacing these buildings, or we do get involved in all the things that the city plans on doing in the next year, I mean, you all should be asking the same question I'm asking. What are we going to do? These expected tax revenues are not going to come through. I don't believe that. So, are any of you going to ask them about that? Just one question. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And let's see if there's any other questions first, and we can ask them all, ask them and answer them all at the same time. Anyone else want to comment on this?
Renee Powers, West Newport, and I hadn't planned on commenting either, but I do have a question along that same lines. I'm right now in the business of helping people save their homes, and the huge amount of foreclosures that are going on, the discounting of principles, is that being taken into consideration for our property taxes? Because I can tell you right now, the banks clear across the United States that I deal with are looking at twenty to thirty percent deficit in the principles, on the good side. So, and I know here in Newport, many of the homes that I'm helping people with, we're seeing a million to two million in deficits. So my question is, is that being taken into accountability? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comments. Lori, do you want to answer those two questions?
Yeah, I'll try and answer. I think, as Dennis said, that we have some indicators at this point. We are just a little more than, about four months into our twelve-month budget cycle, and the different revenues, at least the four major revenues that make up over sixty percent of our general fund, come in in different ways and at different times. We haven't even begun to get property tax, and we really won't know what the total property tax we will get until the end of the fiscal year. As Dennis said, the last payment is in July. So believe me, staff is going to be watching these payments and these revenues on a daily basis whenever they come in. Now what options do we have? We have several options. One is that if we think the revenues are going to be off substantially, and we're not going to make our budget, staff is going to come to city council and let you know that. And we're going to let you know in advance of it saying, of it being in dire consequences. And we're going to let you know in advance of it saying, of it being in dire consequences. So we can make cuts. We will walk through those recommended cuts with you, and it would be your responsibility and your decision as to what cuts, if any, we make. But the other option is that there is a revenue fund, the City Council has a reserve policy set aside for just such situations, if we do have a catastrophe, or if there is a big budget problem. And Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have over $13 million sitting in a fund that can be tapped for emergency situations.
As the City Manager indicated, we have several reserves. It's Council Policy F3, I believe. We have a contingency reserve that is set at 12% of our total general fund appropriations, and currently, that's a little over $19 million. In addition to that, we have $23 million in our capital facilities replacement fund. We have $5 million in PERS rate change fund, and we have, as of June 30, 2007, we had over $6 million in appropriation reserve. I can't tell you what that number is for this fiscal year that just ended. We haven't closed our books yet, but preliminary indications is it's going to be about $11 million. So we do have reserves that are there for such a purpose. I can try to answer the second question, too, if you'd like. If I heard it correctly, it's, the question was something about loans, foreclosed loans exceeding the value of the property, and I don't believe that has any effect on assessed valuation unless that property goes into default, it's resold, and then if it's sold for less than what it's currently assessed at, then of course, the assessment would be lower. But typically, if you have a, if your house was worth $2 million, and it's assessed at $1 million, assessed valuation because you bought it in the late '90s or early 2000s, even if the value's dropped, it's not dropped, cleared down to what it's currently assessed at. So those, in those instances, there would be no decline in the assessment. It's the appeals, it's the people that have bought recently and think that the value of that property is worth less than what they paid for it. Those are the people that are appealing their assessments, and that was the number I indicated that through June, it was a little over, I believe, I said $2 billion, the effect on the city would be a little over $300,000.
Although, there could be some foreclosure activity that would result in, I mean, anybody who's going to go to foreclosure now is underwater. I mean, they bought in the last three or four years, and their loans exceed the value of their property. So we would expect some decline in...
Those won't hit till next year.
I understand that, but there will be. Other than the $350,000, potentially, there could be other decline.
You know, these are times that I've never seen before. My dad did, you know, he lived through the Depression, but I've never seen times like this, and it's new territory for all of us. But I think the city is very well-placed to weather this storm. Again, all we have is indications. I started this discussion by saying it's way too early in the fiscal year to make any sound predictions. We just have indicators. As the City Manager said, we'll come back and report on a regular basis of how we're doing.
Well, don't you, just as a matter of course, though, in any year, a revenue projection is always just a projection you make early on in the year, and you have to monitor it all through the year, no matter what the circumstances are, and be prepared to make adjustments.
Exactly. We finalize our revenue projections in February for the fiscal year that begins the following July 1st. So it's just a plan, it's an estimate, and we use the skills and the best tools we have to make those estimates, but they're just estimates.
Ms. Carter?
The TOT, does that include, you and your projection include Pelican Hills coming on?
My original budget did, but of course, the trend that we're seeing, the 11%, 11.7% increase we're seeing thus far in this fiscal year, Pelican Hills won't open until November 26th. So yes, Pelican Hills was included in my original projection, but it's not included in the trend that we're seeing. So that, with Pelican Hills open, that's even more.
For Tim Biggins?
As I recall, your projections have been consistently very conservative, in that at the end of the year, the revenue that we actually bring in is more than what you project. Has that been the case?
That's been the case every year.
Every year.
For 18 years.
Isn't that fun?
So, well, you've been here 18 years now, so you were actually here during the last downturn.
I was.
And how did the city handle it back then, in the, I guess it was the early '90s?
Well, yeah, I lived through that. We did three years in a row of layoffs, early retirements. We reduced the city's workforce from nearly, I believe it was something like 770 employees, down close to 600. We, like, we cut more than just fat out of this city, we cut down into the bone and the meat. And we knew that, but it's something we had to do. The philosophy at that time from the City Council was, we want you to cut things that don't affect city services. You cut your office staff and things behind the scenes, and you just make do. We don't want to cut police, or fire, or public safety, or anything that the public sees out there. That was last. We lived through those times. I remember in 1993, I just mentioned some reserve indicators, you had $23 million in facilities replacement, $19 million in the contingency reserve, $5 million in the PERS reserve, $6 million in the appropriation reserve. 1993, the total general fund reserves was $8 million.
So basically, the city has weathered a significant downturn, and this time around, we're probably in a little bit better...
I think we're in a lot better shape, yes.
Ms. Curry?
Well, Dennis, I will attest to that, that I think you are, you and Dick are among the most conservative financial managers that I've ever encountered in the country, and I think that's served the city very, very well. And I think all told, if you added up all of those reserve funds, we have something in excess of $60 million in reserves, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
General, just general fund, yes.
Right. I think your comments also spoke to the importance of the fact that keeping the city financially strong is a product of growing our local economy. So Pelican Hills Resort, the work we've done to attract the Newport Lexus, Nordstrom's, Dean &amp; DeLuca, Dick's Sporting Goods that are going into Fashion Island, redevelopment of Newport Center North, where we're going to have $43 million of public funds generated through that private development. Those are the kinds of things that help offset downturns in the economy and provide an underpinning for our local revenue base. Is that, do you agree with that?
Yes, absolutely.
And then, just because the issue was brought up, I mean, we do have a 15-year capital program, not for every city facility, but for those that are going to need to be replaced, including some 80-year-old libraries, the Oasis Center, City Hall, which has been mandated by the voters. But the award that we were given from the League of California Cities is really not because we have projections of our capital program, it's because we have projections of what the impact of that program is going to be on our general fund budget, and our ability to manage that within a small percentage of our budget. I think that's the real point of the plan, is it not?
That's correct. The plan was that we would never exceed 4.2% of general fund appropriations, payment on debt service. That's the high point. That would decrease over time as the city's budget grew.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, thank you, Dennis. Okay, this is receive and file also, correct, so no action necessary. Go on to our next item, which is item number 18, a temporary extension of the length of time permitted for the display of promotional temporary banners.
Mr. Baer, the Economic Development Committee has recently had a couple of discussions on the local economy. In fact, Mr. Danner came to one of the meetings and provided a presentation, not quite as detailed as he gave you this evening, but the same type of information. And then they followed up with reports from each one of the business areas, and then a discussion of whether the city should do anything to help businesses during these economic times, and if so, what. And the one specific recommendation that the committee made, and we're bringing forward this evening, is to extend the length of time permitted for promotional temporary banners. That time period used to be 90 days, and when we amended the sign code in 2005, it was reduced to 60 days per year. And the recommendation of the Economic Development Committee is to double that, so it would be 120 days per year, and that change would be in effect until the end of 2009.
Dennis, will I manage to go back to 60?
Yes.
Does this mean any kind of banner? I mean, like, we could have, every store in Cronedale Mar could have sale?
Yes.
Every store in Cronedale Mar is having a sale these days, I got news for you. So is every other retailer.
Or 120 days they could have a sale.
Well, I know, but there's, I just have this vision of it, making it look far starker, and more like things are really unsuccessful, which drives people away rather than bringing them in a lot of times. But I'm sure that the Economic Committee...
Yeah, actually, I presided over that meeting, and the consensus of the group was that the businesses in town needed some help. There's not a lot of areas where the city can help as far as promoting business, but they felt that that was one tool that they could use to, you know, get the word out that, you know, they are in business, there are deals to be had, and if you're going to spend your dollars anywhere, spend them in our town, so.
No signs.
Yeah, none of the rules are changing, except for the fact that they can extend the time, and it's a cumulative thing over the year. It doesn't mean that they're going to have one continuous banner for that period of time, but I believe that they get a certain amount of time per year. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, currently, the code is, I think, four times a year, and this was not the committee's recommendation, but staff's, if the council is interested in extending to 120 days, we thought it made sense to also double the number of times from four to eight.
But not to exceed 120, humanly?
Correct, correct.
Okay, any other questions, staff?
I'll second that.
Does anyone want to address the council on this item? Seeing no one, bring it back for more of a vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, is there any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to adjourn this meeting this evening in the memory of Martha George. Martha Folsom George was born October 11th, 1916, and passed away October the 26th with her family at her side. She was born in Lake Crystal, Minnesota, and she chose to attend the University of Southern California. While at USC, she met her future husband, Ray George, who was an offensive lineman on the football team. They wed in 1940 and enjoyed 54 years of marriage and 54 winning seasons together. Martha and Ray moved to Cronedale Mar in 1957, where she taught third grade at Harborview Elementary School. Throughout her life, she stayed actively involved with the USC community, traveling with Trojan alumni and attending home football games up until 90 years of age. Martha will be survived by her two sons, Jack and Greg, and their wives Bonnie and Lynn, and their grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Services will be Thursday at St. Andrew's Church, and reception will follow at the home of her son, Greg George. Our condolences go out to her family. And I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting to Saturday, November 8th, at 8:30 a.m., to a closed session to conduct city attorney interviews. The meeting will be held at the Fairmont Hotel, 4500 MacArthur Boulevard, in the Salt Creek Boardroom. With that, we adjourn.